Hi, Councilwoman.
How you doing, David?
Good.
And you? Hi, Leanne.
Hi, Councilman Ferry.
Hello.
I got a new router. Looks like it's better. Only took me about three, four months to second router in that time.
Does it make it faster?
Um, yeah, like, you know, I guess it was distance or whatever. I don't know. It's the second fix like in four months. It's crazy. So faster, clearer.
Evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hey, um, if you hear any rumors about people not getting sick after their second shot, I can testify that they're not true. It knocked me right out yesterday. Oh, I haven't felt like that in 20 years.
I do feel now.
Like nothing ever happened. It's amazing.
Yeah.
What a difference a day makes. So I'm glad that's all.
I have my second one next week, so.
Sometimes it doesn't affect some people, but it sure, it hit me hard. Wicked. I feel good today.
Hello, everyone.
Right.
Hello.
Hello, Council President.
Hello. Leanne, do we need to wait for Rose is?
Um, she is not in attendance. I'm going to take the role.
Okay.
I know the mayor.
All right. Everybody's here that needs to be here, correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special city council meeting to order. This meeting is in pursuant to Charter Section 3.07 and is called to order for Mayor Kenneth J. Hopkins budget address. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilwoman Marina.
Present.
Councilman Ferry.
Present.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Present.
Councilwoman Vargas.
Present.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Present.
Councilman Donigan.
Present.
Councilman Riley.
Present.
Council Vice President Brady.
Present.
And Council President Paplakis.
Present. Before we welcome the mayor, I would just like to ask everybody in attendance to please keep their microphones on mute so there isn't feedback through Zoom back at council chambers where we see Mayor Hopkins. That being said, I would like to welcome the Honorable Mayor Hopkins to the Cranston City Council for his first budget address. Mayor Hopkins, welcome.
Thank you, President Paplakis. Thank you. Good evening, my fellow Cranstonians and members of the Cranston City Council. Tonight, I have the duty to present to the city council my first municipal budget as mayor since taking office just three short months ago. One year ago, I served as a member of the city council while our city and state only began to see the difficult and challenging impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Little did we know how our daily lives would be touched by this historic and dreaded disease. It has been an agonizing year with so many waves for our residents, families, and local businesses, especially our restaurants and small retail owners. We all know someone who has lost a loved one to this devastating virus, and I was honored last night to stand at a vigil with members of the city council as we remembered the lives lost to this pandemic. Our community, as always, has shown resolve in its will to succeed and resourcefulness in how we kept going. With the acceleration of vaccines, I am hopeful we are at the beginning of the end to returning to the new normalcy we will experience going forward. I must take a moment to recognize our Department of Senior Services under the Director of the Steve Craddock and our Fire Department under the leadership of Fire Chief James Warren for their outstanding and flawless administration in our local vaccination efforts for over thirty-two hundred residents. With both of these gentlemen new to their positions and with little advance notice, they developed a playbook to get our residents vaccinated. I appreciate their efforts and all of the volunteers who came forward to assist them. Last year, as we formulated this current year's budget, the administration and city council had to make some budget decisions. Unclear exactly what our fiscal fate would be in the months that followed. We all remember that the council delayed adoption of the budget in hopes of having a clearer understanding of the final allocation of state and federal resources. In some ways, I was faced with similar challenges in formulating the 2022 fiscal year budget that begins on July 1st. Today, we have no final direction yet formalized as the General Assembly has not adopted next year's state budget. Our state aid numbers are in continued discussion with the governor and assembly leaders, particularly the disappointing formula for increased education aid for our schools. The federal government has committed $27 million to Cranston under the recently adopted American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. While we can use the funds to cover costs incurred by December 31st, 2024, they have not given specific direction for use of these funds to local cities and towns. We are working with Senator Jack Reed and our congressional delegation for final direction on spending purposes more specific than the broad guidance offered to date. Cranston unfortunately is one of the first communities in Rhode Island required to propose a budget with an April 1 submission date. Other communities are able to wait longer before proposing a budget. It may have the benefit of additional federal guidance. Some of my advisors suggested that we ask for an extension of time to submit the budget. But I felt that the residents in the city council had the right to know our financial plans, and I am comfortable proceeding forward tonight. In my inaugural address, I focused on several broad priorities. First, to protect your tax dollars. Secondly, to protect our neighborhoods. And third, to protect our special quality of life here in Cranston. This budget for the next fiscal year meets those priorities. As I said in January, Cranston was to undergo a state mandated revaluation of all residential and commercial properties in our city. I know that a revaluation causes homeowners concerns, but I ordered that the tax assessor envisioned appraisal give taxpayers ample opportunity to discuss their property values. We have all witnessed extraordinary increases in home selling prices that must be reflected in the new values as of December 31st, 2020. I have seen that even with new assessments, residents are still selling their homes for more than these new values. The bottom line for every taxpayer is how much in taxes will they have to pay. With the help of our finance team and careful review of our budget needs, I think most residents will be pleased with our final effort. The operating budget and capital budget that I present tonight meets my commitment to continue the effective delivery of city services for every resident and neighborhood. Importantly, it reflects my commitment to our schools, students, and staff. This budget plan will keep our financial house in order to pay our debt obligations. We want to protect our bond ratings to ensure a favorable credit position for short and long-term debt with the rating agencies. In accordance with the city charter, our rainy day fund is over $18 million to ensure that we are able to meet future fiscal challenges. We have that obligation to the taxpayers to be prudent in our budget management. While we are moving towards a reopening of our economy, our estimates of revenue from a variety of our sources are realistic. We have budgeted $7.9 million from the American Rescue Plan Act money. The balance of the money will remain for future years as a restricted account for our needs as federal regulations clarify state and local opportunities. My proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 is approximately $311 million. That is an increase of 4%. Schools are budgeted at $170 billion and the city is budgeted at $141 million. Included in the budget is funding for employee contractual obligations and step increases of $2.4 million. We have budgeted an additional $1.9 million for health insurance coverage. We are fully funding our annual contributions to the city and state pension funds in our annual obligation for OPEB. You may recall last year, OPEB was funded only for one half of the actuarial determined amount. My strong commitment to our police and fire departments are reflected in this budget. We are in the process of a recruiting drive and an examination process for a diverse group of police applicants. I have included funding to fill four officers' positions in the police department when ready. We will soon start to recruit for our fire department, and I have included funding of $1.6 million from a submitted federal safer grant to pay for the cost of 15 firefighters. We are working with Senator Reed and Congressman Landerman in promoting that grant force. I have requests for several other departments for new and open positions. After careful review, I determined that this was not the year to be filling those spots. I have confidence that all departments will continue to meet constituent needs with current staff loads. As a direct result of the pandemics lingering in unknown timetable, I have accepted the recommendation to keep the Budlong Pool closed again this summer. The planning timetable to prepare the facility, hire summer employees, and open the pool does not work in our favor anticipating that COVID restrictions remain in place. As a former athletic director for our schools, that was not an easy choice. I have asked that we explored installing a splash pad at the pool and other locations throughout the city. We are planning right now to have a summer recreation program for our children and to assist working families. We have plans for continued progress in road paving and infrastructure improvements. Our public works needs are reflected in the $6.4 million capital budget that I present tonight. But by far, the biggest commitment I make tonight in urge passage by the council is in the area of education in our schools. Historically, new city dollars to the school department have been modest, and a good effort by mayors and past councils, last year, for example, approximately $469,000 extra was given to the schools from local tax dollars. I have determined that my financial commitment must be commensurate with my support for our kids in their educational needs. Accordingly, I am proposing an increase of $1.5 million for our schools in city dollars. This increase more than triples that of last year and is equal to the highest increase proposed by a mayor in the past decade. Combining the $20 million that the schools will be receiving from the ARPA funds along with an additional $9 million in federal grants, I am confident that the school administration and the school committee can meet their educational obligations. We will continue to urge the governor and the legislature to revise the formula that this year only gives the schools an increase of $36,000 in state aid. The second part of my commitment to the schools is in the proposed capital budget. The voters overwhelmingly approved last November's school bond issued for $147 million. We are providing the funds in the next fiscal year to begin the rebuilding Garden City and Gladstone School as well as several other school projects. In summary, this budget reflects my commitment to all the taxpayers to keep Cranston on the right track. We will always have challenges, but together we can meet all that is put before us. We can continue to be a top-rated community with proper financial management, the delivery of effective city services, and protecting our special quality of life for people to live, grow, and work in our city. To fellow taxpayers and members of the city council, the budget that I present tonight, if adopted by you, will not result in a property tax increase nor an increase in sewer fees or any other fees. This budget is worthy of your support, and I look forward to your deliberations in our collective efforts for our city residents. For anyone interested in viewing this proposed budget, I refer to you to the city website, cranstonri.gilt. Good night, and let us continue to move Cranston forward together. And as always, one Cranston, one Hopkins. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hopkins. Okay, next we have to send all of the resolutions and ordinances to the proper committees so we can start our budget hearing process. All that matters will be referred for public hearings to the appropriate subcommittees of the council. They are listed on the schedule, on the city calendar, and on the website. The first is a resolution adopting the operating budget and salary schedule for the general fund, the sewer fund, the insurance fund, and the capital budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022, and adopting the capital improvement program for the four succeeding years. This will be referred to as special committee meetings on April 3rd, 7th, 8th, 12th, 21st, 26th of 2021. The second item is an ordinance making annual appropriation for the city of Cranston for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. The third item is a resolution levying the ordinance, levying and ordering the assessment and collection of a tax on ratable real estate and tangible personal property pursuant to Charter 6.11, and an ordinance fixing the date when taxes are assessed due and payable and the date when the unpaid taxes will carry a penalty. These all need to be referred to the special finance committee meetings, and we also fixing the time and place of public hearings on the operating and capital budgets. So I entertain a motion to send all of those to the proper committees. Finance Committee.
Go move.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? There have been none. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilman, Councilwoman Marina.
Yes.
Councilman Ferry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Yes.
Councilman Donigan.
Yes.
Councilman Riley.
Yes.
Council Vice President Brady.
Yes.
Council President Paplakis.
Yes, thank you very much. Just some housekeeping. The budget will be posted online shortly. We heard the mayor say that in his speech. Also, councilmember- Yes, thank you very much. Just some housekeeping. The budget will be posted online shortly. We heard the mayor say that in his speech. Also, council members, you can pick up your budget binder at City Hall starting tomorrow. You can do it right in the front foyer there. And then to everybody at home watching on YouTube or on the Zoom, the first budget hearing we're having is this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. Please refer to the city calendar for all of the dates and times. And that being said, any other questions or comments from council members? There being none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the role to adjourn.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.
Councilman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ranzouli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jermaine?
Yes.
Councilman Donigan?
Yes.
Councilman Riley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Brady?
Yes.
Council President Paplakis.
Yes, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Enjoy your evening.